Okay, welcome to the regular council meeting. The date is Tuesday, October the 21st, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM and with that I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll move right to item number three, reporting out from the closed portion of meeting. Nothing to report out at this time. We'll move to item number four, the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Broughton, seconded by Counselor McLaughlin. Any amendments, changes? No? All in favor?
Yeah. Um, I have an on-table item. On the sound.
Sound community forum.
Community forum.
Yep.
You can send it around if I can get it added to you.
Yeah.
Send by email to everyone.
Okay, we'll add that to 3.3.
Sound okay?
$2.
10.33.
There was an item you printed me on the table that I didn't ask for. Has someone asked you to add it to the agenda? Correspondence?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris.
Does that have to be circulated? Okay. The DOO asked to put a motion on the table regarding the asking the fire chief to change the sign. Don't know where that might go, but you do your business. Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor Broughton, what was that that you were suggesting?
The Director of Operations asked that an item be put on the on-table to give him up the authority to change the forestry sign, Ministry of the Forest. Right now it's showing a high as the forest fire rating, 14.
Okay.
So he's just doing his business. For sort of formal authorization to change that.
Mr. Blackwell on to new business for that?
Please.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other amendments, changes? No? Okay, all in favor with the amendments proposed?
We counsel.
I just want to get the number, the numbers. The way that Counselor Broughton has the addition in it, which number one? Your business. New business.
And then, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I have, I have one other one. We've moved to strike item 1032.
Can you read that out, Counselor Abbott?
We moved to strike the agenda item 1032.
Can I recommend you vote on these individually?
Okay, 10.3.2 is a removal of agenda items by Counselor McLaughlin, Abbott, and Cunliffe, proposed by Counselor Broughton. Okay, any other amendments before we vote on each individually? No? Okay, the first item then, the how, adding the how sound on-table report. All in favor?
Bye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, adding the additional correspondence, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, new business, changing the fire sign. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, removal of agenda items by Counselor McLaughlin, Abbott, and Cunliffe. All in favor?
I'd like to speak to that.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I have an item on the agenda, which is the removal of agenda items. And the, it says Counselor wrote matters of timely importance to the community have been repeatedly removed from the agenda since July the 2nd of 2025. And I'm finding it profoundly objectionable that the item to discuss removing items from the agenda is being suggested to be removed from the agenda. I think the, I, the concerns that are laid out there are very, very clear. I'm, I am, have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of this village. I bring forward, forward topics which I believe are of serious concern to our villagers. And I find it profoundly disrespectful to the village residents to have items that I'm bringing forward summarily removed from the agenda. I think it's, it's extraordinary that, that this item would be even considered by this council. But far be it for me to understand the rationale for precluding fulsome debate or discussion about numerous items. Some of the items that have been removed or have been the interim plan and budget for emergency planning and discussion of the fire chief position, the beach park revitalization information, which the community is very, very interested in. The Batani Creek debris flow information and updates have been removed. The aid agreements with North Vancouver to assist the Batani Creek and other community safety issues.
Counselor Broughton, you have 30 seconds remaining.
Okay. By law enforcement, celebration of our community, coastal health, water quality issues, and also items regarding policy of village, of village facilities. The list is in the agenda, so I would refer residents to that list.
Okay.
But I find it unacceptable to keep that.
Thank you for those comments, Counselor McLaughlin.
Mr. Berry, you have a strong control of this council. Mr. Broughton just voiced his opinion for the last two minutes without without being asked to discuss the issue. And so I don't know where the free ball comes from, but I know that you're one that follows the rules very carefully. And this would seem out of place, sir.
Okay, I, I do believe that each counselor has a right to speak. And I've limited that speaking engagement there to under three minutes. So is there any other counselors that would like to comment?
There is no motion on the table yet.
Well, the motion is to remove this. There is a motion on the table, yes. So we, we allow each counselor to speak to a motion. Counselor McLaughlin has spoke. Any other counselors wish to speak?
At a point of order, we were told there was no second.
Which is what I just pointed out to you, sir.
Well, I would have seconded that, then. I'll second it. So any other counselors wish to speak? Okay, I'll speak to it. If no other, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I had my hand up and I asked to speak.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Abbott.
Um, I will keep it maybe brief and and given not to do what Counselor Broughton just did, which was out of order by actually.
Please speak to the motion.
Yeah, exactly. By litigation, the motion, when we asked, or we asked to add it to the agenda. So you gave him the liberty of two minutes. Give me 30 seconds and please let interrupt me. Um, as to the motion to have this removed, all of these items, with the exception of one, have been dealt with. All of these items have come to council and to be moved to even another meeting. One, two, have been dealt with enclosed. So we've dealt with all these items. Counselor Broughton needs to understand we have a code of conduct. The code of conduct is very clear. We're going to work collaboratively. And once council has made a decision that the will of council needs to continue. You cannot continually come back and against the will of council, keep asking for the same thing. It is out of order. And at the end of this, I'd like to hear the CAO's opinion on whether that's out of order, he agrees with me or not, and why this was added to the agenda.
Okay, any other counselors wish to speak? Okay, I'll speak. Counselor Broughton has often put items on the agenda, and my opinion and my feeling is that he's due some respect and do an opportunity to represent the community. I think by striking items from the agenda, I wouldn't propose to do that to other counselors. And this, in my, and again, this is just my feeling, it seems to happen on a regular basis. Counselor Broughton has highlighted some items here that are of importance to him and the community. One being Batani Creek, and I am fully on board with that, and many other items that Counselor Broughton puts forward. So I, I would not vote in favor of this motion to strike it. Any other comments before we call a question? No? All in favor of striking this 10.3.2, removal of agenda items by Counselor McLaughlin, Abbott, and Cunliffe. All in favor of striking that? Opposed? Okay, motion is in favor of striking. We'll move on. All in favor of accepting the agenda with the amendments proposed?
Yes.
All in favor of accepting the agenda with the items proposed?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, opposed. Motion carried. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the agenda. So.
Public participation.
Public participation. Anyone in the gallery, Crystal, wish to speak?
Yes, it's Russ Mickelson here. I would like to speak.
Okay. Okay, Ross, go ahead. You've got two minutes.
Yeah, this is regarding development variance permit application that we have in for 210 Lions Bay Avenue, which is the old Bell property where the tennis court is. And I know that council has not seen this. I've been hoping council will be seeing this. Actually, I've heard from Ross. Ross and I have been speaking at length about this. I was anticipating we would be on the agenda this evening's meeting, and then prior to that, the meeting before. And I did send an email out to everybody that outlines it, so I'll be as brief as I can. And I'm really just here because of my frustration that we are not on the agenda yet. We first applied to the Board of Variants in March. We did our flood hazard assessment, was completed and submitted in May. Dave's done his review during the summer. We met a couple of times. I was given to understand that that had gone to CAO's desk. I had a concerning message from CAO today, and he's been very good to meet with me. And again, here I'm just, I'm expressing my frustration, but, or today that I should have something this week, and he was going to talk to Dave, but as far as I can tell, we should be way past that. The report should be ready for council to consider. So I'm not sure what I'm missing. If there's something we haven't done, I gather not, from, from the CAO. Our owner, it's actually the daughter of the Bell family who grew up. They've been, she's been there since the 70s. They just want to build their dream home on the family property that they've managed to buy out from the other family members. And we're all very frustrated. This seems to have taken an awful long time to get even as far as what I believe is quite a straightforward and supportable DDP, which is a small.
Ross, we're, sorry to interrupt, Ross, we're past two minutes. Is there anything you'd like to say before we wrap up?
No, just hopefully we're going to be in front of you very soon. It's a very small height variant due to the 200-year floodplain requirements. I think it's very reasonable. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blackwell, you're not required to respond. Would you, is there anything you'd like to say? Or would you like to continue getting back to Ross at a later date?
All I can say is, you know, these sorts of issues are not appropriate at the council table. These are sort of issues that should be dealt with in the staff level, not least of which because it's not even a matter of business on your agenda tonight, so.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Blackwell. Okay, Crystal, any other guests wish to speak? Residents wish to speak? No? Okay, with that, we'll move to item 6.1 and really looking forward to this. This is Kim Mailey and Victoria Rogers, and they would like to provide detail on the gift of the municipality. And over, over to Kim and Victoria, if you're present.
Thank you, Mayor Berry, and to council members and Mr. Blackwell. And I'm here today with my husband, Kim Mailey, and we're forming a delegation also in collaboration with Blink 49 Studios. And we've got some really positive and fantastic news for the village of Lions Bay. And I just want to start by saying I'll speak for a couple of minutes just to give you a quick report on the success of the filming project that occurred at our home 185 Tidewater Way. We had a three-week film project that occurred over the summer, and it was a real win-win situation. It was a successful proj- project for Blink 49 Studios. I hear they made some fantastic reality television. And they really enjoyed working in Lions Bay and meeting the community. And the village staff did an incredible job helping to administer their needs. For Kim and I, it was a wonderful opportunity to work with Blink 49 Studios. They were very communicative. They were respectful. They were really good business partners. And we believe that today we'll be able to tell you why we believe it was a wonderful win for Lions Bay. So Kim has a something that Blink 49 Studios prepared, and he'll just bring that forward to show the council and audience today. But it is a legacy that was, that's in for $100, Crystal. And it is given with pleasure.
Sorry, gallery, just move a little bit so we know.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm pretty fine, you. Hey, you know what? Your smile comes. Take two more.
You can photoshop. Yeah. Now, the other, the other item I wanted to mention was we were asked to present our wishes, how these funds could be directed. And so we prepared a letter of understanding. And we hope that these are ideas that will really support the arts and, and and the village as a whole, from lifesaving to acting lessons and so forth. So I'll just tell you, obviously, these are, there's seven or eight items here. And the first one is Lions Bay Beach Park Artwork Project. President of Lions Bay Arts submitted a request for funding. And the artwork requested is a high-quality durable digitally printed and weather-resistant applique which would wrap the new washroom building. Its estimated cost is $20,000. We suggested up to $25,000 be directed toward this initiative. We would like to fund an upright piano. It would have a lockable keyboard. There would be a piano dolly and a bench, and it would be located at the village hall. And we would have this research purchased with the assistance of Lions Bay staff with knowledge. The piano should be tuned within one to two months after delivery. And up to $8,000 will be directed towards this initiative. Next are AEDs and their stations to be purchased for the village at points most needed to save lives. Possibly, possible locations are both beach parks. We propose that up to $5,000 be directed at this initiative. Lions Bay Fire Department and Emergency Coordinator to be consulted. Acting lessons for children and adults at the village hall. We propose that up to $5,000, 50 lessons and $100 per session be directed to cover the costs of an instructor. Lions Bay School Principal Jennifer O'Leary, along with Lions Bay Arts Council to be consulted about an after-school program. Family movie nights at the Lions Bay Beach Harbor. Equipment purchase or rentals. Projectors, sound systems, screens, and perhaps movie snacks would be funded. We suggest up to $2,000 be directed at this initiative. Events committee to be consulted. Second to last, removal of the invasive species surrounding the Calvin Grove Stairway Connector between the Lower Tidewater Way and Sweet Water Way, including the village easement from the lower steps of Tidewater to railway land. We suggest up to $5,000 for this initiative. Village staff to consult regarding the private landscaper to be hired. Formerly $50,000 of $100,000 is to be directed to replacing the current Lions Bay log sign with an illuminated modern Lions Bay sign. This initiative addresses the steep bank going from the top to the bottom of the concrete steps of the Lions Bay northbound off-ramp. It is currently overrun by invasive species, mostly ivy. We propose that the removal of the invasive species and re-landscaping of this area be undertaken by a third-party landscaper to avoid additional burdens on village works. We propose that the sign be replaced with a more modern sign, such as the ones put on the Sea to Sky Highway that were installed for the 2010 Olympics, or an alternative design such as attached. We propose that $50,000 is a wonderful way to welcome people to Lions Bay and to give a very good first impression of the quality of our village. All with that, I would just like to thank you for your attention and thank you again for making an exception to allow this filming in Lions Bay for the three-week period. We have to report that our understanding from our neighbors is that it was very quiet, that they didn't find it destructive. And then thankfully, because we have such a private property in a long driveway, the neighborhood remained very peaceful. And we also took great pleasure in knowing that some people who live in the village were hired. And that gives us a great deal of satisfaction and joy, knowing that made a difference to other people in a very positive way. And I'll leave copies of the letter of understanding for the council and its.
Victoria. Victoria, thank you very much. On behalf of the village, thank you and Kim for everything that you've done to make this happen. I think it's a wonderful gift and much appreciated. There's many, many items there that the village is going to benefit from for years to come. So something to be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this. You guys may. Wait, you went to all the council.
I think all the council should, I think over there. Yeah, so with your, we'll do that too, but, but I think you.
Okay, Ken, can I? I'll act on your behalf here. Just gonna pause for a minute.
Yeah, you have a smile, Ken?
Crystal.
All right, well.
Crystal, can you put the block from Ken's face?
Yeah. That, that'll have to be shaved off, Ron.
There you go. No, 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 no. You're not seeing what we see.
I didn't want to really. Chain the porch.
Snuggle in, everyone.
In there, Kim.
Flags, we got.
Can we see, Ken?
Hold the second.
There we go. Okay.
Can I Photoshop a few zeros on the end?
Sure. What are you, what are you, walking the banks for?
Standing inside the doors of all dancing, flipping them around, like the car wash line.
That's it.
All right, well, once again, thank you to Kim and Victoria and Blink for the work that they carried out. We all look forward to watching the program. Okay, council, great news. So we'll move on now to the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve September the 2nd, 2025 minutes? And a seconder?
Second.
Any amendments, changes?
Yep, I do.
Okay, Counselor Abbott?
On page 11, there's a typo. We have, we have baking signatories at our bank. Sort of maybe he was talking about cooking things. Anyway, it happens to us, baking should be banking. And then on the same page, bottom of page 11. Um, so just to be clear, this is about the mistake it was in the zoning setback. Are we all clear that item 7.7.2 should not be mentioned at all? That's the wrong clause. That's not the clause we changed. It's 7.1.2.
Mr. Blackwell, any comments on the?
I can't, I would have to go back and check.
The recommendation still sees to amend section 7.7.2 of zoning law.
Seven point.
7.2. Now, to point it out, it should be 7.1.2. 7.7.2 is about size of lots, 8,000 square meters. Section change.
Again, Mr. Blackwell, any comments on that? We don't have that in front of us. Any comments?
No, we'll, we'll double-check that and make the administrative changes to properly reflect the section. Thank you for it.
All right.
That's what I'm putting that out.
Okay, any other amendments? All right, all in favor?
I.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we'll move to the next item, which is a motion to approve September the 11th, 2025 minutes. Do we have a motion? Moved by Counselor Broughton, second?
Second.
Okay, second, Counselor Abbott, any amendments?
Just a minor last page, which is page 17, I think. It refers to September the 9th instead of September the 11th. It's just a minor. The special council meeting of September 9th adjourned. It should be September 11th.
Okay, Crystal, could you make that change? Okay, any other amendments, changes?
Question?
All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, a motion to approve the September 16th, 2025 minutes. Do we have motion?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Counselor Abbott, second by? Counselor Broughton, okay, amendments, changes? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, motion to approve September 16th, 2025 minutes? Do we have mover? Oh, sorry, apologies. September 18th, 2025. Do we have a mover?
I moved.
Moved by Counselor Broughton, second by Counselor Cunliffe. Any amendments, changes?
I, I'd like to speak to.
Okay.
Once again, there was no meeting. There was no quorum. Therefore, there was no meeting, so therefore there should be no minutes. I think we've been through this before, and that was the ruling the last time.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Crystal and Mr. Blackwell.
My understanding after speaking with Mr. Woodstone is that these would be considered action minutes. Just a record of what transpired. So these were inadvertently put in the. So these were inadvertently put in the closed meeting last meeting, if you remember. But these were the actual open minutes, because Council Abbott was correct. There was no closed meeting, because the meeting didn't happen. You could not move it to close. These, I accidentally put them on that agenda. These were the record of.
There was no meeting called to order. There was no meeting. There should be no minutes. Staff shouldn't be producing minutes on something that shouldn't have happened. It was well documented in emails that quorum was not going to be attained.
If I could?
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. Further to what Ms. Ken is saying. Ken reached out to Don Lidstone with regard to his advice as to how to deal with a situation like this. Staff's position initially was no meeting, no minutes. He advised that, in fact, you have to capture that there was no meeting and no minutes. So that's what these minutes reflect, is sort of his advice on this. So they're minutes, but not the minutes, if you will.
Okay. All right, so.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, Council Abbott.
There's going to be an insistence in these minutes that they need to be accurate. They are not accurate. Council Cunliffe and Council Abbott informed they would not be present more than 24 hours in advance. Mayor and Council Broughton came to a meeting knowing full well there was going to be no meeting. That should also be recorded. It doesn't even mention here that we expressed our regrets. It says only Council Broughton was absent with regrets. It's not accurate.
Okay, any comments? So Council Abbott, are you requesting that that be reflected in the minutes? Is that?
I believe there should be no minutes, and they're not accurate. I prefer there were no minutes.
Okay.
But if they're all going to be minutes, they need to be accurate.
Right.
Okay, I will just make any other comments before I comment. No, okay. Tuesday evening, all councilors, Council Cunliffe, Council Abbott, Council Broughton, and agreed to a meeting on the Thursday, I believe it was. And then the meeting was duly posted, as all meetings are legally required. And after the meeting was posted, I think there was an outreach to Mr. Blackwell, and he can correct me if I'm mistaken. But the outreach was, we'd like to change the time or not attend the meeting. Mr. Blackwell said the meeting has been legally called. It's illegal to change that meeting. It's been posted. And so we went forward with the meeting. There was no quorum. And as is documented and suggested by our legal counsel, I see no harm in reflecting the minutes that a meeting was posted, called. There wasn't a quorum present. Meeting didn't move forward. Council Cunliffe.
I would concur with Council Abbott, but regrets were given. Actually, a request to shift the meeting time by two hours was agreed to by Council Abbott, Council Broughton. It was yourself that did not agree to the two-hour shift in time. The meeting was set as we were walking out the door after 10:00 PM on a Tuesday evening. I had not yet an opportunity to check in with my employer to see if I was able to leave work early. I was not. I requested a shift by two hours. It was not agreed to by yourself, and that was requested within, prior to 24 hours, which could have been amended had you decided to cooperate. So.
Sorry if I could.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Blackwell, I'm going to respond to that, because there's a few statements that are incorrect there. The meeting was called and duly posted. That's a legal requirement. It was in the village update, posted, and the meeting was, the time was set. And from that point on, it would require everyone all a unanimous decision to shift that meeting time. I had prior requirements or prior commitments. We can't just shuffle things around. This has happened many, many times, Council Cunliffe and others. And when a meeting is duly called, it's, you either show up or you don't. If you can't make it, that's fine. And in this case, the meeting didn't have a quorum and it didn't go forward. So it is what it is, and it was recorded. And in fact, our CAO, Mr. Blackwell, let everyone know that it wasn't legal to start changing things at the last minute. So, Mr. Blackwell, I'll hand it over to you.
Perhaps I could help counsel on this. So I can confirm that a request was submitted in advance of 24 hours, which is tick that tick box. No staff were available to make any changes to. There's nobody available to do a new agenda to change the time. So if that had been the case, we could have facilitated that and everything would have moved forward accordingly. We didn't have the staff in place to do that, unfortunately. There was not enough lead time. So we could, we were, the staff was not in a position to repost it at the later time. That said, I can confirm that there was nothing untoward with how it went. Circumstances change. Council couldn't make a change of quorum, which is totally legitimate. There's nothing wrong with that at all. And so there's, you know, there's nothing untoward in this whole process. It was just sort of a collection of glitches and timing and so forth. So it should be a minor issue.
Okay, I'll call a question if there's no other comments. All in favor of approving the meetings as recommended by our council, Don Lidstone? All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carried. Three to two. Okay, next item is the October 7th. Let me just get back to the beginning of the agenda. Okay, a motion to approve the October 7th minutes for 2025. Do we have a motion? Do we have a mover for October 7th, 2025 minutes?
Okay.
Okay, Council Abbott moved a second. Okay, I'll second those. Any amendments, changes? All in favor?
I've got a few.
Okay, Council Abbott.
Just a few things back, Chris, on item 10, page 33. It refers to the asphalt grindings or asphalt millings, it could be as riprap. It's not drip rap, so very different thing. I don't think the term drip rap is used. I'm not sure where that term came from, but it's not actually accurate. It should be asphalt millings or grindings. Look, that is large rock that's used to armor banks.
Okay, Crystal, if you can make those changes, I agree with Council Abbott on that. And if any others have any comments? Okay, Council Abbott, any other changes?
Yes. On page 36. This is about the tree application on on 1340 Ocean View Road. We discussed this in the meeting, and I'm not sure it's captured accurately here. Because it says a survey is required in case, because the applicant must determine the tree in the application is on the property of 340 Ocean View Road. The tree was on the property. He does not need a permit. This is still captured inaccurately. It was a require from staff to do a survey. But that first part of the statement doesn't make any sense. No one needs a permit to carry trees on their own property.
Mr. Blackwell, would you like to reword that?
Yes.
Okay, any other changes, amendments?
Yeah, one more. The spelling of Norm Baumeyer is incorrect on page 39.
Sorry, what was the change, Council Abbott?
Norm Baumeyer is his name, not Baumier.
Yes.
And it's written as Baumier. Can we call him by his name, Norm Baumeyer?
Okay, Crystal, can you make that change? Okay, any other amendments?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Okay, with that, we'll move to 9.1, list of the ongoing actions.
Sorry, could you matters arising, please?
Yes, thank you for that. Matters arising, any items?
Yes, I do on the September the 2nd meeting.
Okay.
On page nine. There was a request for the management letter, not by me, by someone else. And we haven't received that. Could we put it on the action log, please?
Sorry, which management letter?
Audit management letter.
Is this, okay, and this is the audit management letter? Are we reviewing this? Are we disclosing, or what are we doing?
I don't know. The minutes read, and the way I recall it, the military council expressed a desire to see the associated management letter, which is kind of in the draft. The topic of management is maybe discussed in a closed session. And it has not happened. That was the request.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Yeah, I can fill that blank in just a little bit. So the management letter is a letter from the auditor to the municipal management. It's to address internal processes, staff processes. So, you know, one chunk of their work is public-facing, and one chunk of the work is staff-facing. But council nonetheless wanted to see what the auditor was saying about staff. So that's on the list to do, is once it's done and dusted, to make that available to you so you can see what they're saying to staff.
So can we put that on unfinished business log?
Be back.
It was all the requests was.
Hey, any other items?
I wasn't going to relitigate it, just the other request. On item 10, 1, 2. It says this is about the development of the 401 Bayview Road. Statement in the minutes is signage on the property was erected for 10 days. Advising the community of the application, conditions of public feedback process were met, which is, which I set out in the Bible. I didn't know the rules when I asked the question, so I didn't comment on it. But I have since gone and read the Bible, and that statement is inaccurate. What the Bible says is that the sign must be posted within 10 days of submitting the application, and it must be removed no later than 30 days after the public hearing or decision on the application.
Hey, Mr. Blackwell, any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other items?
Not on that particular one. I have on. Sorry, I do page 13, using the same. Softly put the headers. I used to do, but I have a lot easier. There's a couple of other items on page 13. Action item, it's bolded, staff to report back to suggest the location of portable washrooms at next regular council meeting. Can you put it on the unfinished business log? It's not there. Staff to report back with translate numbers, this is item 10, 1, 11. Forecast numbers on completed projects, this is about translating. We put that on the unfinished business log.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell, you have your hand up.
Yes, just a bit more directional of that. Mr. Chirkov has provided that staff to counsel. Wondering what more specific information we can provide to bring forward.
I'm going to go back and have to look at Mr. Chirkov's report. I didn't think. We weren't completely answered on that.
Take another suggestion. For if any particular council member is interested in those details, if and when any member council chooses to talk to Mr. Chirkov about the budget, meet with him, and with that in mind as well, and he can walk you through those details. Two birds, one stone.
Okay.
All right, I have memo on those minutes, but I have another matter arising from the 16th of September minutes.
Yes, go ahead.
Item 10, 1, 4, regional context statement.
Page.
Page. 23 and 170. Once again, it was carried with a vote of 3 to 1. And just put it back now. There was only one opposition, so it should be 4 to 1, I guess. That wasn't my question. My question was for the CEO. Now that we are aware that revision was done on the previous version, where are we at with this now? Because, I mean, that came to light, or got understood after the meeting, came to light in the meeting, but got understood afterwards. So my question is really, what's the next step? Do we need to put this on the unfinished business log, sir?
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you through you to Council Abbott. So a bit more detail for people that may not be able to speed on this. Our official is OCP. Let me back up further. Well, the previous administration slash council worked through an updated regional context statement for Metro Vancouver in relation to the municipal strategy. That was taken through the full process and endorsed by Metro, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The next step is that that information is taken and the OCP is updated. That last step never happened. So the OCP, that is our official online OCP, doesn't have that information in there. So I utilized that document. And thanks to Council Abbott pointed out that that document didn't have that updated information. So we have the pause button. I have not had a chance to go back and look at further revisions based on the quality of other council priorities. The goal is to get back to it. I don't think much will change. There are some changes, but I think the essence of substance is generally hasn't shifted. In other words, Lions, now the work is done with regard to the notion of sort of the urban attainment boundary and the rural designation and so forth. Now that's all done. There's really no material change relative to the RGS and the regional context statement. What was valid then is valid now, so all that needs to happen at most is what I tried to do last time, which is sort of modernize the language, if you will. So that's going to be coming. So we can tick that tick box for Metro, but there will be no substantive changes. It'll just reflect the accurate information. And again, thanks to Council Abbott for putting that up.
Okay.
So to be particularly correct, I just want to correct myself. It did come up in the September 16th meeting, but it was the October 7th meeting where it came to light that was the wrong version. It's in both, the same statement is inaccurate in both sentences, but it's really the October 7th is the one. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, we'll move to, sorry, the action log. Any councils wish to highlight any items on the action log?
I do.
Okay, Council Abbott.
Remind me what page it's on.
41.
41.
Yeah, item 339. So this was this proposal that we endorse support, investigate a trail race event in 2026. I don't know if this person still intends to go forward with it. We had a couple of actions to go back to search and rescue, which hasn't actually happened, and we're supposed to get input from the Bushard Director of Operations. Can we go out and ask this person if he still intends to try and do that? And so I think we're going to, running out of time soon. It was meant for the spring. Item 339. Item three, three, nine. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, thank you. We have staff meetings, have council meetings to bring everybody up to speed. So perhaps we can highlight this as an action item for that discussion tomorrow.
If, if I may, the director, through the chair, the director of operations did follow up with, I can't remember his last name, Paul, and sent him sort of his thoughts and, and outlined some checks and balances that he would need to have in place. And I haven't heard back from him since that point. And that was quite some time ago. So I can, I can revisit that.
All right. Thanks for that update. Counselor Abbott or other counselors, any items you'd like to highlight or ask staff?
Just one, I've got one more, but just one left for on that. One of the key things was to speak design to solve, right? We haven't done that part yet. So to risk.
Correct.
That's, that's, I think that's key. They are, they might have, I don't know if they have concerns with that. Um, then item three fifty eight, it's marked as complete. Um, but correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I missed it. This is about says staff to compile violations, collection statistics from Wiggins Collection Agency. So I understand it's complete, but I think the request was that council got to see them, not just that they were done.
Mr. Blackwell.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, um, so Mr. Benra brought forward a summary, as you will recall. And then some discussion happened about, like, I can't remember if that discussion actually now was in staff about Wiggins. Or whether it was in council.
In the council meeting, this, this is actually re-expect. That's why it's on the law.
Yeah, right.
From October seventh meeting.
Right.
But now Shand is completely received and issued the following.
Yeah, I'm not, as you say, I can't remember whether that additional information came forward or not, but we'll, we'll discuss that tomorrow and just figure out where that sits.
Okay. And then the other chance was, we didn't get it.
Sure.
Uh, any other counselors have any items they would like to ask questions on, discuss?
Okay.
No.
Hey, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Brown.
Ninety seven. CEO to complete a cost benefit analysis of document storage options. I know there's some discussion during uh, our budget discussions and so on regarding storage. I think that this, that there's, there's a, a major issue and a disconnect regarding the use of village facilities. And one of the items that I had on my action list, on my list of items for council to deal with, that was removed from council agenda, was a policy on the use of village facilities. Uh, we heard tonight the donation of a upright piano and so on. Uh, it, it's a little bit, it's a, it's a complicated kind of discussion, but I think we need to be looking at how our facilities are used, how the, how the community sees the, the facilities being used. And I think, I think it's a bigger, bigger discussion. And right now we're talking about, you know, possibly incurring a, a, a financial cost to build more, more storage. And what are the implications of that? What are the benefits, what's cost benefit and so on? So I just think that, that at some point, the policy on their use of village facilities needs to be respected. And, uh, and I point out that it was one of the items that was, has been removed from the council discussions. Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Where's the relevance of what you just said to facilities? This is an operational matter.
This is, uh, this is regarding the complete CEO to complete a cost benefit analysis?
Point of order.
Okay.
Um, as we said earlier, you put this argument forward before, council rejected your suggestions, decided it was operational. And you can't just keep asking the same thing over and over. Respect the will of council. We had made a decision. It was operational. Please let's move on. Cannot just keep asking for things over and over. Once a decision's made, we have to move on.
Okay, any other items? On the action list? No, okay, with that, we'll move to item nine point two, draft subdivision servicing bylaw six fifty one. Do we have a motion that the third reading be granted to the subdivision servicing bylaw number six fifty one, twenty twenty five? Do we have a mover?
Second.
Okay, seconded discussion. We'll go around the table. Please raise your hand. Uh, Counselor Conliff.
Uh, it would seem to me, from my understanding, when we went to first and second reading, that we then scheduled a public hearing. It would seem appropriate to wait until such public hearing occurs before we move into the third reading in order to take into consideration the public's opinions and concerns and compliments and so forth. If we read, have a third reading, we'll have to rescind that to make any changes. So it just seems to me like we're putting the cart for the horse a little bit here.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, just through you, I guess, to all the council, public hearing is not required for these sorts of bylaws, so no public hearing scheduled for this. There are, uh, local government act specifies this, the, the types of matters that can be considered for public hearing. And so public hearing is, is a specific statutory thing. It's not the same as a public meeting or an open house or, or whatever. Uh, it's a specific statutory obligation that's set out under part fourteen of the Local Government Act. So with respect to that, subdivision servicing bylaws is not one of the bylaws that qualifies for public hearing.
So if I could just. The, the agenda calls for a third reading. The actual resolution is to grant first and second and to direct staff to schedule a public hearing in accordance with section four, six, six of the Local Government Act. So I'm confused here. It's page forty two.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, well, if I don't have that in front of me, what I have is that, it says that third reading be granted. Oh, uh, so in the staff report. Yeah, so that was, that was actually incorrect. That referenced public hearing in the staff report.
Gotta say, I like this. I like the public hearing part.
We're having one anyway.
Okay, um, Mr. Blackwell, you have your hand raised again, and then we'll go to Counselor McLaughlin.
So just to, just to reiterate, although this doesn't qualify for quote, public hearing. Uh, you know, council is entitled to hold public information events on any matter it so chooses. The subdivision servicing bylaws is a purely technical engineering document. So I can't, I can't imagine anyone would sort of want to weigh in on the technical required engineering requirements for water connections and so forth. But if council was so minded, it could hold us in sort of open house affair.
Okay, Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you. I think the, uh, I think the I like your report as written, Mr. Blackwell.
Without that public hearing.
With the public hearing. Next try. No, with the public hearing.
You can't do it.
Okay, any other comments before we call a question?
Um, before we call the question, I'm not sure what the question's going to be.
Question.
Because they.
Do we need to amend this?
Well, the question is, the, the motion has been made. If we, if someone, uh, counselor has an amendment, we should put forward an amendment. Uh, and if someone has an amendment to call for a meeting that, uh, Mr. Blackwell, and I'm just paraphrasing, but Mr. Blackwell, you're saying a meeting is not necessary. However, counselors seem to be leaning towards, uh, having a public meeting. Uh, so, okay, I'll turn it back to Counselor Brown.
Okay, um, it's my understanding that first and second reading has been. Okay, so the motion. I'd like to, to amend this motion to read that third reading be granted to subdivision servicing bylaw number six, five, one, twenty twenty five. And that, that council remove number one and two and replace it with that, that motion. If in fact we have already moved the first and second.
Chair on the, not the staff report, but on the actual agenda, it is only asking for a third reading.
Okay.
So that's what.
Okay, so, and we have adopted the agenda, so we've adopted that motion to discuss.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, no, you have not adopted any motion.
No, not adopted the, adopted the wording for the motion.
No, no, this is a recommendation, uh, and it's up to council, somebody on council to move it and second it, debate it, and then decide upon it.
Okay, therefore, okay, I would move.
So it has been moved and seconded. And just to, for council's benefit to, to reiterate, it was moved by Counselor Conliff, seconded by Counselor Abbott. That third reading be granted to subdivision servicing bylaw six, five, one, twenty twenty five. Uh, the next opportunity, by the way, is the fourth and final reading, which is adoption. That's not before you tonight. So it's a third question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, Counselor Conliff, I can't see your hand. Is it opposed? Okay, there we go. Uh, defeated, motion defeated. Okay, we'll move to item number ten point one point one.
So we can, we can just leave it to second mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
Okay, might as well just we bring this back. As recommended already in a I'm missing this rate.
Well, sorry.
Okay, and the motion was defeated. Mr. Blackwell, you had your hand up. Please explain to us where we go from this point with a motion defeated.
So you now no longer have a bylaw to deal with subdivision servicing, uh, which is highly problematic. It's, it's all good bylaws that are antiquated and vastly unusable. This is the worst one of all. So this again, I, I find puzzling because this is a purely technical engineering document. There's no discussion associated with this. It's developed like through the use of MMCD standards. Mr. Burr worked with, uh.
Mr. Blackwell, where do we go from this point? We, you've explained that this is something that the village needs. We voted it down three to two. Where do we go from here?
Can we put a new motion forward?
If it's different.
Yes.
Okay, what motion would you like to put forward, Counselor Conliff?
Can I ask, can I ask a technical question prior?
Yes.
We do have a public hearing scheduled on the third of November. I understand that you say this doesn't qualify for a public hearing. Could we add on an open house portion to the public hearing? Because there probably are a few people in the village that may be more inclined to have, want to weigh in on this or provide some thoughts. We have a very technical group of residents.
Is it a request for input?
Uh, input, I mean, our meetings are not overly well attended by all members, but having the opportunity to have a public hearing about another matter will get some interest from residents who then may, I, I want, is there a piggyback option here that we can put forward? Just before we go?
Mr. Blackwell. Please, please help us out where we can go to salvage this.
Right. So having done this for thirty five years, I'll tell you this, this should be slammed up. This should be first, second, third, done. This is not a, this, this is a bylaw that the community can't weigh in on. Uh, but if you wanted to have.
It was confusing, by the way. It was presented in the package.
If council did want to have the community weigh in on it, then you would have to bring an engineering team out to facilitate a discussion and make a debate why this type of water service is preferable over, et cetera. So I, I don't really know what to say.
Okay, Counselor Abbott, you have your hand up.
Okay, I think the, the request was to see, uh, to help us out and, and get this back on the track. There was two counselors that wanted to give the public a chance to opine on this. Um, for whatever reason, I, I, we don't need to analyze the reason. That was the request. That's what we're trying to get to. And we managed to defeat the bylaw by trying to get to that point, um, which was.
Counselor Abbott, please, Counselor Abbott, please get to the point here, okay? This has been voted down, and now we need to put this back on track if there's a way to salvage this. Uh, we don't need creative, uh, reviewing the vote for this.
That's what I'm trying to do. So can someone make revised motion?
Mr. Blackwell, we've asked you once or twice a, a third time, what can be done? Do you need to think about this? Perhaps you need to think about it and come back to council with something.
So your option, uh, you know what? Let me, let me check, let me check legally what, what your options are.
Okay.
I gotta make sure you're on side with this one.
All right, that's good. We'll move to item ten point one point three, bridge joint exposure remediation. Uh, there is a report, uh, Mr. Burr, if he is in the gallery, could come forward and answer any questions?
Mayor, could I, could I make a suggestion that we also, uh, move the new business item uh, regarding the fire board change, uh, while Mr. Burr is before us, just to deal with that quickly?
Yeah, I think that would be wise. Okay, um, any counselors have an issue with that?
No.
Okay, why don't we move that item right now, just to get that out of the way? Do we have wording for that?
Could I move that the, uh, Director of Operations be requested to make the necessary change to the forestry sign or the, uh? What is, what the?
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, do you have a more concise wording?
Well, my concern is you adopted agenda and now you're on the fly changing it, which you're not legally allowed to do.
So if we have, if we have all the counselors agree to that, can we make that change?
We added to the agenda a lot of this time.
Correct. Chasing the order.
If we have all the counselors agree to that, can we make that change? Mr. Blackwell.
For expediency.
Uh, Mr. Blackwell, one more time. If we have all counselors agree to that, I think this is going to be about a thirty second affair if, if you'll allow us.
I will look the other way up at that.
Okay, all the counselors, uh, okay, the motion, uh, is to allow, uh, Mr. Burr to make the changes to the fire sign. All in favor?
Aye, yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, on to the bridge joint exposure. Mr. Burr.
Mr. Second.
Uh, sorry, uh, seconded by Counselor McLaughlin, moved by Counselor Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, Mr. Burr, over to you on the bridge.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm happy to receive questions from council. I'll just point out, I wanted to say that once. Um, you will recall that two years ago, you authorized to spend a three hundred thousand dollars to remediate eight bridges. Uh, that completely can, uh, well, I suppose it's actually seven, which is eight bridge is the driveway bridge, uh, on Bayview over over which is a separate project that was remediated at the same time. So, uh, seven bridges had a three thousand dollar budget. We then subsequently, um, that was before my time, uh, we then authorized a hundred and eighty thousand dollars we spent, which we, on three bridges, uh, which we got done for ninety five thousand four hundred. Uh, you're welcome. And, uh, the, the results were very good. Uh, I gave you some probably a little more technical detail than you need there. Uh, the fear had been that, that the bridge deck stays where it is. It's based on very um, concrete apartments. The road sinks over time and the edge of the bridge deck, which is concrete, gets hit by snowbar blades and, and tires and starts breaking away. And the fear is always that salty water gets into the rebar and messes it up. How you determine if that's the case is you chip the concrete where you have a look, which is exactly what we did to find that the rebar was in remarkably good shape. The pictures, I didn't want to make a very large picture, but if you can squint your eyes at that rebar, you can see that it's pristine. It's pristine. It, it was, that's actually the right word. It was zero sign of rust. So that was, that was good news. Um, we buttoned everything up again on the three bridges we did because I think it's safe to, for the, the rebar remaining for bridges is as good. We slowed down the project. We still, uh, we still have a hundred thousand left. We're going to use that to check, um, the remaining four. One's a special kind of bridge in that it sits on piers in the river. That's the Harvey Avenue Bridge. So it's a much quicker and easier inspection. You just dig away a little bit, which we did when we fixed the, uh, the ring wall anyway. And we're going to use a little bit of the money to engineer and then raise the deck and point it down to the, uh, Cross Creek Bridge of Harvey. Um, for all kinds of good reasons, it'll fix some of the, the drainage that we couldn't do with our asphalt work. It will, um, raise the or lower the curb. So this, it's within spec. The curb shouldn't be more than eight inches high. So this, it's within spec. The curb shouldn't be more than eight inches high, the stumbling risk. And it will protect the bridge. So that's all within the existing budget. It's just going to take this next year.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Burr. We'll open it up. Any questions for Mr. Burr? No? Okay, councillor Abbott?
Yeah, so all very good news, and thank you for that. I'm not quite sure how you take credit for the rebar over the last three years, but you're welcome. Well, I got the job done for half the price.
Thank you.
All right. I'll echo that. Great news. I was expecting just the unexpected, but that's great, so.
Like Mayor Barry, I was expecting a reverse news.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Burr. We'll move to the statement of financial information. We'll call on Joe Chirkoff. We have his report and we'll open it up for questions. Mr. Chirkoff, please come to the table.
Thank you, Mayor Barry. There's nothing changed potentially from the last report that was presented to council. There was some commentary in our last meeting regarding just some expenses from council members for travel costs. Those have been corrected, and so this is the final, so be for approval, and then we'll put it on the village website.
Okay, it, it says here for information, Mr. Blackwell, do we need to pass a motion to approve this?
I think you need, why not?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion to approve, moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded. Councillor Conliffe, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Do you, any comments?
Sure, councillor Abbott, over to you.
Just one observation, and the director of operations is in the room, as a case of the Chirkoff doesn't know the answer. Director of operations salaries stated on, on the first page, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but in this contractor section, there's also an additional amount for Forest Walk Holdings. Is that from a previous year? Or can someone explain the timing? The extra sixty-seven thousand dollars? I think that's a little bit more than he's typically paid. Can we clear that up?
Sure, there was a, he was on board, and that's kind of play in twenty twenty-four in April. Just to have full compensation for him, played individual, with those two together, on the payment of payments, and needs reconciled to what our actual payments were in the financial statements to, not should we payroll them to contractors, so that's why that's in there. It's the same, just a different schedule.
Mr. Blackwell, sorry?
What could you state the answer?
I was just explaining that fighter point on what Mr. Chirkoff's saying. The difference is Carl, Mr. Burr was operating in the context of a contractor until that changed, and he moved into the position of a staff role and left behind the contractor. That's why you see both.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I, I hesitate to think that's accurate because you say you should add those two numbers together. I don't think Mr. Burr made over two hundred thousand dollars. And he's muddying his head in the background. So there's a timing issue. It's an invoice that paid late, there's something, or you got paid an awful lot of money.
Mr. Chirkoff?
It's simply remunerating. He was an employee at the end of the year, then he did report what he was paid in cash. The receipt of amounts that disply are services should require to be balanced to the financial statements. It's not a labor item. I think these are some costs, so it's just a different way of presenting.
It wasn't how he was paid, it was what he was paid.
When, yeah, I get it, but this is.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, we'll move to accept this mover. Second, all in favor?
Yes, aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Chirkoff. Okay, with that, we'll move to the House House and Community Forum. Councillor Brown, we'll pass it over to you. We do have a report.
This is for information.
Okay, any questions for councillor Brown? No? Okay, we have councillor Abbott. You also had a report that you put on table. Any comments?
Any questions? Anyone's had, I'll take them.
Okay, any questions?
I will just draw attention to just one item at the end, or maybe it's not the end, somewhere down in the report. I refer to changes that will be coming to the rockfish conservation areas and the sponge reef conservation areas. This will impact some of Lions Bay residents. Interact with, with the sound, as in crabbing and fishing. I, hoping to get some more detail and more full support at some point. I was going to bring you up the climate action committee first. But yeah, that, it heads up, there's, there's an issue there. And.
It's messy.
Yeah. And, and then just for other, other interests, residents might want to do some research into the European green cab crab and keep your eyes open for it. It's an invasive species that's now being noticed on Sunshine Coast. So, yeah, maybe it's something out in the village update or something to draw some attention to that. People should look out for this little critter because it could damage our, our, our sound as it has done in other areas.
Okay, well, thank you to councillor Brown and councillor Abbott for attending that House House Forum. With that, we'll move to correspondence and councillor McLaughlin, any correspondence that you would like to highlight?
Yes, I, I've got a bunch of things. It's the end of my rotation at this month before I hand off to councillor Abbott. There are on the, on the piece, a letter from Anthony Grebel. I've spoken to him yesterday and again today. He's happy with the way things are going relative to the committee, the whole, and the budget discussion. So, you know, he accepted my thank you for writing his letter, so I think we're done there. The tree management piece from the bird friendly team. I try and act in the will of council, given that our rules sometimes differ. There's no specific ask in this one, but it's, the substance of it is for staff to be more tree friendly. And to use the term they do is walk the talk about the birding season and things like that. I'm going to suggest that we receive the letter, but the next time we're discussing our tree management policy, I'll bring it up again. And we can see the residents' perspective on this. I really am at a hard point to to reflect the will of council responding to this letter and just not saying anything just doesn't cut it.
Okay, councillor Abbott has his hand up?
Yeah, I just passed a comment, I think. I think you might have missed what the point of this was about. I'm not going to go into great detail now because it's been discussed at the climate action committee. There's been talk about a tree inventory in Lions Bay. Director of operations has mentioned it. Climate Action Committee and the bird friendly group have been working on and doing a natural asset inventory. We've applied for a grant. This tree inventory meshes into that. I think this was just to give you guys a heads up. These things kind of come together or should come together. That's, that was the intent of this, but I, I'll leave it till when it comes forward as recommendations or further steps taken.
Okay, any other councillors?
I'll seek some guidance from you when I respond back. That's fine, councillor Abbott. Thank you very much. Two more items, Mayor Barry. The first one, I asked the deputy corporate officer to bring on table, which he has, it's from resident Monica Edwards. And she's asked about beach access at her right of ways at one fifty, one forty Lions Bay Ave and two hundred, two ten Lions Bay Avenue. And she's asked that the area be cleaned. And I just gave a piece to Mr. Burr to have a quick peek at. Maybe he'd like to make a comment.
Mr. Burr, would you like to join the table and make a comment?
Thanks, through the chair, I guess. And this is a perennial issue that comes up every ten years.
Not clear, we, why the council's giving, if it's operation.
Today, just.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
I could just suggest that the matter be referred to staff and staff can have a conversation with them.
I wouldn't mind giving council's guidance on this. There are multiple rights of way in the village that we don't care simply because there's no point, no need, and no budget. This, these are two of them. The reason being that once people make their way through there, brambles removed, there's nothing to do. There's there's a rock. There's three feet of non-private property at low tide. There's no access to the beach, which I think is the intent here, the Lions Bay Beach Park beach, because that's closed for safety reasons because the jelly's coming out. So if council wants us to spend time on clearing this, these two particular rights of way, we can do that.
Hey, councillor Conliffe.
Would be that it's not just access to the beach, it's access to the water. And for somebody to even just go sit down and watch the tide rise and fall, they should have the ability to do so. It is public access, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of time. So, I mean, we.
I don't think the intent behind this is to actually access the beach.
Okay.
From my perspective.
Okay, I, I read it and I couldn't tell. So if that's the case, yeah, I can just clear it. One take, couple else.
All right.
Yeah, I can make a comment to this.
Yeah.
I didn't contact Monica directly when I saw this, but I, I think I know the reasons she might want to go to the beach. She's an artist. The other people like to go there just with prepared monoculars and look at birds and go down and draw sea scapes and just spend some time at the water. And it's that, that's just the word. Pretty sure that's what it's about. It's not, it's not transferring across the, to the other beach. Okay, thanks. If I could break the chair's indulgence, I can perhaps address something that councillor Abbott brought up before on my comp. It's all public, so I have no problem revealing it. When I was contracted to the village, I wrote this ten thousand dollars a month gross. I took care of all benefits and taxes. My salary now is a hundred and fifty-five seven thousand, something like that. So do the math. That's, that's an annual number. I don't know how it came up to be that the, that my holding company's number was sixty-something. I, I imagine that's when it got booked, that's all. These are all public numbers, so it's, it's one of the travails of being publicly employed. Your comp is, is not. But there's, there's no such a huge or no dugger here. It's just maybe it was time.
All right.
That's the culmination of how you know it is. It's just what, it's the annual.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other, any other items in the correspondence?
There are clearly two more, and I'll be quick on them. They're very similar theme. One was, I missed it the last time out, was from resident Alexander Cockran. You may recall this individual, his daughter takes piano lessons. Piano lessons don't comply to our noise bylaws. Gee, what a tricky little one because we're not going to say to our bylaw officer, forget about this, because we ask people to come forward for events. I'm, I'm of the view that I'll write to Mr. Cockran and say that council believes his daughter should keep taking her piano lessons.
Okay, that, I think.
I think that would be the first one. I don't think we're looking to change her bylaws on that. The other one was from Dr. Banton. This one we may have found humorous at the time. I didn't respond to him because it was the same thing when I saw Mr. Cockran's. The issue with Mr. Banton was placing garbage outside of his property. The only problem, it wasn't his garbage that was being placed in front of his property.
Yeah. I, I think that, that Mr. Blackwell made a comment about that. It's something that they would look at. It's not as straightforward as it might seem in that many driveways crisscross or are shared. So that would be something I would imagine, and, and Mr. Blackwell, please comment, that staff would have to look into, but I think it's reasonable to have garbage in front of your own property, if that's possible, but it sounds like it may not be as straightforward as we might think. Mr. Blackwell?
Yeah, thank you. You know, this ultimately gets down to neighborliness and the degree to which you want to have a regulatory environment where everything is prosecuted. What I would tell you is if a neighbor is doing that, the best solution is rather than put provision in the bylaw and have a bylaw officer go and deal with it, just talk to your neighbor. Try to come to some consensus as to where it's acceptable and deal with it on a one-off basis. I can't imagine this sort of rife across the community where people sort of in the middle of the night sneak, well, not allowed to do it in the middle of the night, but if they were allowed to do it in the middle of the night, sneak out there with their bed and put it in front of their neighbor's driveway or something.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. As our agent, I want to reflect the will of council. And these are, some are straightforward, some are a little on the muddy side, and I don't want to be off base in my response. Thank you, Mayor Barry.
Thank you. Okay, any other items or questions for correspondence?
Just on that last one, I thought we agreed we were going to discuss it. We looked at the bylaw.
So I think we agreed that staff was going to look at it because it wasn't as straightforward. Like, like Mr. Blackwell had previously said, there is driveways that crisscross or are shared. My initial reaction was, boy, that's pretty straightforward in front of your own property, but apparently it isn't. So, Mr. Blackwell, do you want to look at that in more detail or, or come back to staff the next meeting with a response if you would like to think about it?
Thank you. This was a matter that was directed by council to the garbage bylaw process, so I would imagine this will come up for, for debate then.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to public questions. Crystal, anyone in the gallery wish to speak in the council chambers? If not, online?
No one in the gallery and no one online.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay, moved by councillor Abbott, seconded by councillor Conliffe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much. Time is eight twenty-seven.
Before you guys go, just maybe get back to this.